Good evening and welcome to our forum tonight for the Berkeley City Election. Today is September 19th, 2019. This candidate forum will feature candidates who have filed for either mayor or city council here in Berkeley. There are two candidates for mayor and six candidates for the city council. Voters will be selecting three of those candidates for city council, each for a four-year term. The sponsor of tonight's forum is the League of Women Voters Oakland Area. My name is Charlie Carpenter. I am a member of the League of Women Voters. That's right, gentlemen. Pay your dues, you too can join. I am not a resident of Berkeley. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer-based, national-trusted, nonpartisan organization. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate or a political party, we are directly involved in shaping the issues that keep our community strong. As a member of the League of Women Voters, I have the opportunity to participate in a leadership role in activities like this that have a great impact on state, local, and even national issues. If you are interested in learning about how you can have a similar impact, I'd encourage you to pick up some of the information we've brought tonight, or you can visit our website, which is L W V O A, that's League Women Voters Oakland Area dot org, L W V O A dot org. As I said, the League of Women Voters does not endorse any candidate or party. The views expressed here tonight are solely those of the candidates, and the League takes no responsibility for those views. The format for tonight has been established by the League. We ask that the audience remain silent during the forum. Now would be a good time to turn off your cellphone if you haven't done that already. We ask that the candidates answer the questions with their views only and not interrupt the other candidates. The candidates will be answering questions submitted by you, the audience. They've been screened by Judy Bateman from the League for duplication and appropriateness. Allison Wilhoff will be circulating. If you'd like to ask a question, she has a little piece of paper and a pencil for you. Please return your questions to her or Judy. So the format is as follows. Each candidate will be given one minute for an opening statement. They'll go in alphabetical order. Closing statements will also be one minute, and those will be in reverse alphabetical order. And then for the questions, the candidates will have one minute also to answer those, and they'll start in rotation, also in alphabetical order. If a question is particularly complicated and we need to extend that time, all the candidates will have equal opportunity and time to answer those questions. Our timer today is Suzy Sherman-Hall. So we will begin now with the two candidates for mayor. We'll go until about 7:10. Brief intermission while we seat the candidates for city council. The candidates for mayor are Robert Lathrop and Daniel Turbrack. We'll begin with the one-minute opening statements. Mr. Lathrop, please go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Robert Lathrop, and I would like to thank everyone for watching this forum. I especially would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting. You know, next year will mark the 100th anniversary of women earning the right to vote, and the League played a significant role in ensuring universal suffrage. We are all grateful to the League. My parents moved to Berkeley in 1956, and I was born here in 1968. As a child, I attended Oxford Elementary, now gone. I also attended Anderson Middle School, and I graduated from Berkeley High School in 1987. If elected, I might be the first graduate of Berkeley High to become mayor. I've put in 50 years in Berkeley with no desire to leave. I'm so permanent in Berkeley that there is a spot for me at 12 Mile and Woodward. I'm literally not leaving Berkeley ever. I currently serve on the tree board, and I am a passionate environmentalist with 30 years of experience with environmental nonprofit groups protecting Michigan's natural resources. I would be honored to serve as the mayor of the only home I've ever known.
Thank you. Mr. Turbrack?
Thank you. I do want to thank the League for hosting this forum. It's a great opportunity for residents in here and also at home to be able to watch and learn as much about the candidates prior to the election. So I'm the mayor of Berkeley right now, and I've got to tell you that I've served the city for the last 12 years, 10 of those years on council and two years as mayor. But when I was first elected in 2007, my why, my purpose, was drastically different than what it is right now. When I first ran in 2007, I was a third-generation Berkeley resident, and I wanted to give back to the community that had given me so much. But I had ulterior motives. I had dreams of possibly running for higher office one day. But life intervened, and I am now raising a fourth generation of Berkeley residents and doing my part to help population density in Berkeley by having a fourth. We'll be here in February of 2020. But that is my why now. I'm serving because I know that the decisions that I make now will impact the future, the Berkeley that my kids grow up and become the fourth generation and hopefully the fifth generation with my grandkids as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now begin with the questions from the audience. We'll start our first question with you, Mr. Lathrop. Can you speak to the retirement plans, funding of pensions, and healthcare for police and firefighters in the city?
Well, I know that the pension fund for public safety is better funded than for non-public safety. I will continue to make an effort at supporting the pension. We're better than other cities, but it's always something we can work on.
Thank you. Mr. Turbrack?
Yeah, honoring the promises that we've made to our former employees is incredibly important. It's something that is important to me, and it's important to council. And in my past 10 years of serving as a council member, it was always something that we wanted to make sure that we paid very close attention to. And if you go back and watch those budget sessions, you'll see that paying attention to GASP and now with Public Act 202, not only are we funding our pensions at the corrective action plan, but we actually are making additional contributions to further enhance and to decrease our unfunded liabilities.
Great. Thank you very much. For our second question, we'll start again with you, Mr. Turbrack. What is your plan to assist residents with property damage due to new construction? I'm assuming that has to do with road construction.
I don't think it's due to road construction.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
I would assume that it's residential reconstruction or new construction. This is something that has certainly been a concern, certainly over the last few years in particular, when we've had a boom of new housing developments and new builds essentially in the city of Berkeley. We have been paying close attention to our codes and our ordinances in particular. We just last meeting updated a ordinance for drainage standards and had a first reading for an ordinance to include new drainage standards for residential construction or new construction. New houses are fine, but you shouldn't be a, it shouldn't have a negative impact on the houses that have been around you, and we need to make sure that we're taking care of all of our residents. And starting with our code, making sure that our code is up to date and our code is followed is the most important part of making sure that we're able to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Lathrop?
I'm a big supporter of GIS technology, and Berkeley does some of that. We're making some progress in that. This example that is spoken of is about a French drain that got broken by a developer. And if we had the GIS technology there and recording it, maybe that could have been avoided. So I'm hoping with more support for GIS, we can avoid some of these problems in the future.
Thank you. Perhaps a related question then, and we'll start with you, Mr. Lathrop. What is your plan to address the issues related to sewers and wastewater infrastructure?
Berkeley is dependent on Oakland County and the region, and that is right up my area of interest, stormwater and wastewater. And we're not, we can't do too much beyond the restriction plates and the, and some of the small things. I'm willing to lobby the county for more infrastructure and region for Berkeley.
Thank you. Mr. Turbrack?
Yeah, it's a very serious concern, and with the changing environment, it seems that we're getting more of these intense rain events than maybe we would have previously had. Aside from the city taking some steps immediately after our flooding events here, you know, restrictor plate covers strategically placed throughout the community to slow down the amount of water rushing into our system. We've held a couple of public workshops to help residents as it relates to backflow preventers, rain barrels, other education that we can help with our residents. The new stormwater grading requirements that I mentioned briefly will play into that as well. But this is a regional problem. It's not just a city of Berkeley problem. And finally, after many of those events, the Oakland Water Resource Commission has started to allow us to be part of the conversation, and it's a regional conversation, and we are, we have a seat at that table, and we're able to share our story so that we can actually come to a solution for the entire region.
Thank you. And then for our next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Turbrack. What will you do to help attract new business, especially restaurants, to Berkeley?
So Berkeley is a very attractive destination right now, I would argue, for businesses and residents. We've won a number of awards recently for being a great place to raise a family, and we're a very safe community, and all of those factors play into what attracts other businesses. Now, we have a very vibrant and active downtown development authority and a chamber of commerce that plays a role in helping to attract these businesses. But at the end of the day, we are going to attract the businesses based on the vision for our community and what we want the future of Berkeley to look like.
Thank you. Mr. Lathrop?
The city explored form-based code. I don't really want to touch it, but, and we could develop some properties on 12 Mile and stuff. I'm, you know, I'm willing to maybe look at that at a case-by-case basis, the form-based code.
Okay. Thank you. And for our next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Lathrop. What, oh, excuse me here. What are your plans for the recreational center and other municipal buildings?
I voted for the community center twice. I'm a supporter of the community center. I believe it needs to go where the ice arena used to be. I don't believe we need to rush it now. It was defeated in 2018, and we need to work on the sentiment for the supporting a millage because a millage must occur. And, you know, I think maybe 2023 maybe is around. I think we could start looking a second, a third time at supporting a building.
Thank you. Mr. Turbrack?
Infrastructure is incredibly important, and it's one of the biggest challenges that we face in the community. Sorry, Charlie, I keep talking to you, and I should be talking to the residents. Our municipal buildings that were mentioned, certainly we know that the community center needs not just upgrading. We do need a new community center, but it's also the Department of Public Works building. This building that we're in right now, infrastructure is going to be important. But as it relates specifically to the community center, it did lose very narrowly last year, and I certainly supported that. And I have not given up on that. In fact, I have a group of residents that we meet with on a monthly basis right now to continue the conversation regarding a new community center. And that conversation is, what do we think happened? What do we think the city of Berkeley really needs versus what do we think the city of Berkeley really wants to make sure that when we do come back at some point, that we can have more of a broad-based coalition and not a 50-50 or 51-49 like we had last year? A community center is something that is important to everybody, and we need to make sure that everybody's involved in that conversation.
Thank you. And then also for you, Mr. Turbrack. What are your plans to further involve the residents of the city in decision-making processes? And in particular, what additional uses of social media could be used to keep the community involved in decision-making?
Yeah, communication is something that we need to continue to work to improve with our residents. A lot of folks, you know, social media is one way to reach out, but it's not the only way to reach out. The city now has a Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee, which is a newer committee that is tasked with helping to advise on how we can better interact with our residents. But technology is also another factor that we need to seriously invest in, and that's not just social media. It's being able to efficiently interact with our residents and be able to respond much more quickly, and that's something where we haven't invested as much as I would like to see, and that's certainly part of my plan with our chief innovation officer, Stan Lesika, and his new department, being able to work with the CEAC and other groups to make sure that we are interacting with our residents as efficiently as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lathrop?
Yes, I have a campaign Facebook page. I intend to keep that up and make it available and make myself available on social media for residents. There's only one councilperson who makes a dedicated effort to be on social media, and I think constituent engagement is very important. And I'm willing to make some PSA videos. And as mayor, I believe my role should be as an advocate for things that are happening in the city. So I'm willing to put myself out there and engage with the public.
Thank you. Mr. Lathrop, what are some qualities that you think make for a good mayor?
For me, I think I have the time that it requires. I have more time. I have two days a week to be in city hall, talking with staff. I have time to talk with residents. I am committed enough to lobby the state or lobby the county for what the city needs. I intend to be a member of the Michigan Municipal League. I intend to be the member of the Mayor's Association of Michigan. To me, it's time is what is needed from a mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Turbrack?
You know, to me, important qualities of a mayor certainly are communication skills, communication abilities, but also the ability to build rapport with all the different stakeholders in the community, certainly residents, but that's business owners, the boards and commissions, city staff, and experience. I do believe that in any capacity, whether it's in a city or in your job, leadership positions are earned based on your experience, based on your merit, and that's what I want to continue. And I've been able to accomplish that over 10 years, being on council and two years as mayor. I feel like I have the experience to understand how everything works, to be able to make sure that, at the end of the day, the residents have the highest quality services that they deserve, that our budget is where we want it right now, which is very healthy with a good rating from not only the ratings agencies, but also our audit. Those things all work together. They don't happen in a vacuum. Thank you.
Thank you. And then also, Mr. Turbrack, what is your assessment of the Coolidge Road quote-unquote "diet," including the new bike lanes?
What are you talking about? No, I'm just kidding.
Like I said, I'm not from the area.
No, no, don't worry about that. I think everybody that's here is well aware of what you're referring to. So as the mayor and council, I've had to make a couple of decisions and votes already on this. I supported the Coolidge Safety Project as a matter of public policy. It made sense for Berkeley, but at the end of the day, it has to make sense for also the residents and the business owners as well. So I supported it as a trial, which is what it is. And we will be evaluating it in just a couple of months, at the end of six months, and then again at the end of the year, to see if it's actually providing the benefits that we're looking for. If there are negative impacts, it's a trial, and we already made sure that it was very clear that we just restripe it back. As far as the individual pieces of that, there could also be configuration changes, whether it's a bike lane, whether it's a right-turn-only or lane as you're coming up on Coolidge. But at this point, I hear from residents on both sides, and I haven't had anybody on either side come out as a majority at this point. So we're going to let the process play out, and then we'll make our evaluation after that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lathrop?
When I was campaigning to be mayor, I circulated all of my petitions. I walked this entire city, every single precinct. I spoke to all 112 people who signed my petitions, myself. I asked their opinion on Coolidge, and 98% of the signers are opposed to the Coolidge. And so I'm agreeing with the prevailing opinion. I believe the opinion in Berkeley is opposed to Coolidge. And I'm not the kind of person that would give you something that's sour and tell you that it's sweet. And I'm going with that. Personally, I'm 50-50 on it. I think there's some pros and cons either way, but I'm going with the prevailing opinion of the community.
Thank you. Mr. Lathrop, if you are elected, what steps would you take to put Berkeley on a firmer financial footing?
Berkeley's doing good financially. We've had a surplus the past five years, but I'm the kind of, I'm Scottish, and so I want to save some money. And I would like to set some of that aside for a rainy day. I do like a diversity in the budget. Some things are not funded. Some things are underfunded. I really want this city hall renovated. It's a 40-year-old building, and this council chamber is too small, and I might make a bigger commitment to the city hall in the budget. But I think we're doing good financially.
Mr. Turbrack?
Thank you. Yeah, a budget is simply a list of priorities. I've been involved in 12 of those now in the city, and I can tell you that the position that we find ourselves in now, we are very healthy from a financial standpoint. We have a 40%, you know, general fund balance. You see our CAFRs that our finance department puts together, they're awarded every year for the quality and completeness and transparency of those documents. But when you're going through that budget and making your list of priorities, it's not just a one-year thing. You have to look at multiple years. That's why we have our capital improvements project, our CIP, to know what we want coming, infrastructure needs. So it's important to make sure that we're putting all of these together, but right now we are. We have a double A stable rating from the bond agencies, which is very strong. We already mentioned continuing to fund our OPEB, our Other Post-Employment Benefits, and healthcare and other retiree benefits is certainly something that's a priority to us in the city. And as long as we can continue to do that, we're going to set ourselves up for success in the future as well.
Thank you. And getting back to you, Mr. Turbrack. Should Berkeley participate in any expansion of regional mass transit, and if so, under what conditions?
Yeah, regional mass transit is certainly something that we've spent a lot of time in the city of Berkeley discussing, not only locally here, but with our partners, part of the Woodward Five, up and down Coolidge. To be a vibrant Detroit and to be able to make sure that folks can get around much easier, mass transit is something that we have to, as a region, address. It's not something that Berkeley alone is going to be able to fix, but we need to be a player and be at that table, just like we need to be at the table for the regional discussions on how we can fix the capacity in our drainage system.
Thank you. Mr. Lathrop?
Yes, I intend to represent Berkeley personally at the county level on any issue that Berkeley might be concerned about. And I don't see mass transit being worked on now, but I'm feeling positive about it after 2020, depending on the outcome of the election. And I think I'm willing to look at mass transit for Berkeley.
Thank you. Mr. Lathrop, please describe a time when you accepted responsibility for a failure and took steps to correct it.
I can't think of something off the top of the head, but I would take responsibility for something if, you know, if I failed at something. I wouldn't hesitate on that.
Thank you. Mr. Turbrack?
It seemed like an open-ended question. I'm not sure if you were specifically talking about something city-related. If not, you can ask my wife, and I'm sure she'd be able to tell you lots of times where that was the case. But as it relates to the city in particular, even at last Monday's meeting, there were some residents that weren't aware of potential batting tunnels that were part of the, that the Dads Club had graciously donated, and our Parks and Recreation staff had been moving forward into implementing those. And I was aware of that and assumed, again, we know what that makes me, because I made the assumption that at a baseball field, the baseball use was going to be something that was welcomed by the residents. We didn't reach out to all of the residents in the area, which isn't typically something we do, but that, I take the responsibility for that because I didn't ask those residents if that was going to impact them. And that's something that I am willing to admit that I should have handled differently, and I did not.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, this will be our last question, then we'll move on to closing statements. And, Mr. Turbrack, what steps should the city take to ensure that every eligible citizen is able to vote?
Well, I think we need to do, not just in the city of Berkeley, that's a nationwide issue that I think we all need to work on. You know, having voter drives, voter registration drives, but also setting up transportation, whether that's city transportation or other, to make sure that people can get to the ballots if they choose to vote on election day, or making sure that folks are aware of how to get an absentee ballot, making sure they're able to get that on time so that everybody has the opportunity to participate in our democratic process.
Thank you. Mr. Lathrop?
Back in the 2018 election, I was personally involved in advocating for and getting people to sign on to Proposal 3 and Proposal 2. And I've always helped with helping people get to vote. Here in Berkeley, I think our problem area is precinct 6, Patton Gill School. The parking is not adequate enough. There's only about 24 spaces for voters. And then on the other side of the street, the parking is restricted due to fire lane, and I would open that up for parking. Precinct 6 has the lowest voter turnout.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to the closing statements, and we'll start with Mr. Turbrack.
Thank you, and again, thank you to the League for hosting this. Thank you to everybody who was able to make it out tonight, and for those that will watch at home so we can make informed decisions in November. I'll close with this. Berkeley's a great place to live. It's a tremendous community. We know that because, you know, we've lived here, and many of us have grown up here and choose to stay here and want our kids to grow here as well. But we're being recognized now much more frequently for that. You know, we were named the best suburb in Michigan this year. We're consistently one of the safest cities to live. We've been named one of the best places to raise a family. We have incredible businesses. We have a vibrant downtown, and we have an award-winning school district. Those things don't just happen without a community being engaged. And over the course of my time here, I've been able to, as I mentioned earlier, build rapport, be able to work and forge relationships and build relationships, even with folks who may not always agree with my point of view. Being a leader is about having to sometimes make difficult decisions and knowing that you're not going to be able to please everybody. But my vision for Berkeley is to keep Berkeley Berkeley. We have unique charm. We don't want to lose that. We don't want to be anybody else, and I make sure that my vision will continue to keep Berkeley what's important to all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lathrop?
I'm currently on the tree board, and I've made some house calls while I'm on the tree board, and I will continue to make house calls. I will make the time. I will find the time to lobby the county or lobby the state. I will attend the meetings. I will be in city hall during opening hours. I will find the time for Berkeley because this is the only home I've ever known, and I care about it tremendously.
Thank you, Mr. Lathrop. Thank you also, Mr. Turbrack. We appreciate you both making the commitment tonight and to public service. The audience appreciates your time and help. The audience appreciates your time in helping us educate voters here in Berkeley. We're going to go ahead and get started with the City Council portion of our forum tonight. Welcome back. The candidates for the Berkeley City Council are Susan Sitraro, Bridgette Dean, Ross Gavin, Mittin Naidoo, Natalie Price, and Charles Tyrell. Thank you all for being here tonight. We'll begin with the opening statements of one minute. Ms. Sitraro.
Thank you. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and thank the residents and stakeholders who are here tonight or watching at home. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sue Sitraro, and I've been a Berkeley resident for a little over 24 years. And my daughter Olivia is a 2015 Berkeley High School graduate. I spent many years volunteering with groups for the betterment of Berkeley. And as much as I've enjoyed this volunteer work, I wanted to do more. One of the reasons I'm running for City Council is that my professional career in the banking industry and my educational background provide me the skills necessary to make informed decisions. I believe better decisions come from a wider range of knowledge and experiences that will supplement the current makeup of City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dean.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum tonight. And I'm running to keep my City Council seat because I'm passionate about Berkeley. I have a BA in psychology and a Master of Social Work, both from the University of Michigan. While a practicing social worker, I worked in community mental health and later private practice. Approximately 15 years ago, I decided to venture out into the business world, opening my knit store, Havvy Any Wool, right here in Berkeley. I have a track record of service in the city, serving on the Greater Berkeley Chamber of Commerce Board, and I was the vice chair of our DDA. Each position that I've held has honed my listening and communication skills, as well as my problem-solving skills. I've been respectful of differing points of view and have worked hard to come to consensus on issues. I'm accessible and transparent and will continue to be. I lead a team at my business every day, and I know how to make a business run, and I know how to make the trains run on time. Being a Berkeley business owner and resident gives me a unique perspective, which I believe allows me to serve thoughtfully and effectively on council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting the forum. I just want to say that Berkeley's a fantastic city. I mean, my wife and I chose to start and raise our family here because of that unique sense of community that we all feel, because of the incredible school district and the services provided by DPW, the safety provided by the Department of Public Safety, and the Parks and Rec Department, and library that offers such great programming for all of us. So we live in a great, great city. That doesn't mean we don't have our challenges. I mean, certainly, infrastructure, I've been working on to try to upgrade and maintain infrastructure over the last two years on council, also making sure that we continue sound and budgeting practices, but also look to fund our long-term debt liabilities, and then also preserving our quality of life. So it's been a real honor to serve on council for the last two years, and I certainly hope to get the opportunity to continue to serve the residents of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Naidoo.
Thank you, Charles. Hello, my name is Mittin Naidoo, and I too would like to thank the League of Women Voters and you, the residents of Berkeley, both here and watching at home. I'm a businessman, I'm a father, and a family man. When we chose to move to Berkeley recently, we did so for the reputation of it being a safe community with great schools. But it wasn't until we met our neighbors and got involved with all the things the city offers that we realized what really makes Berkeley special. Everybody in Berkeley truly cares, from residents to businesses and city departments. Everybody has a stake. I'm running because I too care and strongly believe we need a fresh perspective in City Council. My top priority is to preserve and build off the things that make Berkeley such a great place to live. I will bring a fresh perspective. I have no ties to local groups, parties, or anyone in City Council. I am here for you, whether you lived in Berkeley your whole life or are new and want to set your roots like me and my family. I want to be your voice at the City Council table. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Price.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, and thank you to everyone here and watching from home for participating in the democratic process. As a parent of two young kids, safety is my first priority. This includes supporting our phenomenal public safety department, as well as improving our aging infrastructure like roads and sewers. As a former English teacher and the current chair of the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee, I want to improve communications between the city and the residents. And since April, I've been out connecting with residents. I've connected with over 1,000 residents about the city issues that matter most to them. I look forward to collaborating with them, all residents, and all invested parties in order to make Berkeley the best that it can be. Safety, communication, and collaboration are my top priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tyrell.
Thanks, Charlie. I too'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting together this forum. You do such a great job of presenting issues and candidates in a nonpartisan manner. I truly am nonpartisan. I do not belong to any political party or club. I'm beholden to no one except we, the people of Berkeley. My campaign is totally self-funded. I have a professional background in corporate and nonprofit finance, where I manage budgets on a par and sometimes even larger than the city budget. I've negotiated larger and more contracts than probably the city's ever seen. Reading most of the city codebook is actually pretty easy. Commissions, boards, authorities, all have rules to follow. We need to follow the rules. Some developments go through the entire gauntlet of planning and reviews, others not. This needs to stop. It's time to continue our focus on these priorities and to refocus our attention on other areas of need, such as infrastructure and long-term financial obligations. I am the one to do so. I am here to serve.
Thank you. Now we'll begin the question portion of our forum. The first question, we'll go to, we'll start with you, Ms. Sitraro. What do you see as the single greatest challenge facing this city right now, and what are your plans to face it?
I think the biggest challenge the city faces right now is getting feedback from the residents. I have what I call my three E's: engagement, education, and empowerment. And I would like to implement that. Engagement is listening to the residents regardless of the position they hold on issues. Understand and ask questions. If you don't hear from a wide cross-section of residents, you need to ask why. If you cannot afford to interpret silence as agreement, since it usually means just the opposite. Education: answer the residents' questions, make information available timely. Empowerment: empower the residents to make informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dean.
Yes, I believe that our current, the biggest challenge currently in the city of Berkeley is our infrastructure and flooding, quite frankly. We've all been affected by flooding in the region and specifically in Berkeley. I know my family and I had over two and a half feet of raw sewage the last time, so I am definitely committed to finding a solution to this problem. I believe that it's going to be, take the region, the county, and the state to figure out what the actual solution is going to be. I'm encouraged by the recent developments from the county inviting us to the table, all the communities in the GWK drain, that they all tie in here in Berkeley, and there are probably 12 different points where water dumps into that drain. We've never been invited to the table before, and I think that that's an important first step. As a city, we've taken a lot of steps toward remediation. We've instituted a catch base and replacement program, installing over 200 restricted covers in the spring of 2018. We have citywide sewer, televising, cleaning, and structural lining programs that actually help maintain and keep our infrastructure functioning at its optimum best. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin.
Yes, I think infrastructure has got to be the top priority. It's a foundational governmental service. I mean, our roads, our sewers, our water mains, our sidewalks. We were fortunate enough to have the voters approve a millage last time for a dedicated funding stream for roads. That's certainly going to help, but I also think we need to look to the county for the tri-party road program that they install as well to help pay and offset some of those costs. Certainly, our sewers and backups into homes, I mean, we need to continue to look at backflow preventer help for residents. And we need to incorporate green infrastructure into our city, and we need to look at rain barrels, rain gardens, bio swales, vegetation swales, anything that's going to mitigate stormwater rushing into our system. I know it may look a little scary sometimes, sitting on top of the road like that, but it's actually a good thing, in part because of those restrictive covers that we have on top in our streets. So I think that infrastructure is going to be a comprehensive regional issue with the Water Resource Department, the county, certainly at the state and federal level, and unlocking some of that and unlocking some of that funding where we can actually move to create some of the solutions that face us.
Thank you. Mr. Nedu.
Thank you. Certainly, I think Berkeley has done an excellent job of combating its challenges. But I do also think that our aging infrastructure is certainly a challenge. So, the question is, how do we, as a city, go about addressing that? I know that's, that's a talking point. We talk about all our challenges, but what exactly are we as leaders going to do? And I think the most important thing we as leaders can do is communicate and engage with the community, and really just focus on effective ways of fixing the issues, you know, and reinforce, really, to the community, the importance of fixing these, these issues. Because these issues are talking points, but it's kind of like, hey, it's going to be taken care of. But I think we as leaders need to reinforce why we need to take care of this and the importance of it, because we cannot do it without, without the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Price.
Yes, I think the greatest challenge that faces Berkeley is a challenge that's not unique to Berkeley. Here in Michigan, we suffer from our state's limited revenue sharing, that out of 50 states, Michigan is ranked dead last in the money that we receive back from the state for our municipal services. While money from state governments has increased in all the other states, in Michigan, it has decreased. I think that the best way to address this challenge is to support and become active in the Michigan Municipal League, the organization that lobbies on behalf of all cities at the state level. As a council member, I would be an active contributor to the MML and use my skills in communication and advocacy on behalf of the city of Berkeley.
Thank you. Mr. Tyrell.
Thank you. The single greatest challenge is money. We've only got a pot of money, it's only so big, and how are we going to spend it? Not just on what programs, what are we going to buy, but how are we going to buy it? What are our contracts going to look like? Currently, we buy everything. We buy fire trucks, we buy dump trucks, we buy buildings. We don't lease anything. We need to take a look at alternative forms of finance. We could free up a lot of cash by leasing rather than buying. So, there, there gives us some, some play in that bucket of money. And the state is going to do what the state is going to do. Nobody's going to change that. The state doesn't have a whole lot of money to give us in terms of revenue sharing, so we've got to take care of our own.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Ms. Dean. What is your vision for the Berkeley Parks and Rec Department? Are there any programs or services not currently offered that you'd like to see provided? And alternatively, is a Parks and Rec Department necessary for a city of our size?
Absolutely. I believe a Parks and Recreation Department is necessary for a city of our size. There, our, the value of our housing stock is directly related to the services that we provide as a city. And our Parks and Recreation Department currently offers programs for all residents, from infants through senior citizens. They give us access to health and wellness, exercise, enrichment. And as a community, I think that that's a value. You know, we're, we're all doing this, and we're not talking to one another. So, it gives us a place to gather and to come together over shared interests and activities. Our Parks and Rec Department, I'm just going to brag a little bit, was chosen to receive a federal grant to install a splash pad and make improvements at Oxford Merchants Park, and I'm very excited to see those developments. We offer robust summer camps and vacation camps, and I can't say enough good things about our Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin.
Thank you. Yeah, the services provided by our Parks and Rec Department are comprehensive, they're incredible, they're engaging, they engage all levels and all individuals here in our city. And I think it's absolutely crucial to support the Parks and Rec Department through our budgeting practices and through our engagement and involvement in the programs that they provide. You know, they serve to, to bring folks together, to allow individuals who may not necessarily always meet or talk or anything like that, the chance to come together as a community, as a gathering place, as someplace that we, that we all can kind of call home and collectively work together to make sure that we're pushing the, the programs for our Parks and Rec Department forward. So, yes, I absolutely believe that is essential, and I fully, fully support the Parks and Rec Department.
Thank you. Mr. Nedu.
Thank you. First of all, I believe the Parks and Recreation Department is excellent at Berkeley. I think Teresa Carlton, Mc Carlton does a phenomenal job. I had, recently had the opportunity to speak with her, and, and just learning about the things that our Parks and Rec offers is unbelievable. So, I would urge all our citizens to, to take advantage of the Parks and Rec Department. I know I certainly do. I would say my vision for the Parks and Rec Department is to support it, is to support it financially, seek funds to support it financially, and allow it to continue to thrive. I think that's one of the things that makes Berkeley uniquely Berkeley, is our Parks and Rec Department. It's, it provides great spaces for our seniors, as well as my two-year-old son. And, and again, my goal and my vision for the Parks and Rec Department is to allow it to continue to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Price.
I am very biased on this subject. I live only a few blocks from the community center. I used to teach a class there, and my kids and I often go to the community center or to the parks for programs of play. But even residents who don't directly use the parks or the community center indirectly benefit from the services they provide. For example, parks and community centers create neighborhoods with fewer violent and property crimes, where neighbors tend to support one another and protect one another. They also enhance property values, increase municipal revenue, bring in homebuyers and workers, and attract retirees. The benefits that we receive from the Parks and Rec Department are essential for maintaining our community's high quality of life and well-worthy investments we make in the department. Our Parks and Rec Department currently rents space from Anderson Middle School for their summer camp, and this partnership benefits the families who have a phenomenal and affordable childcare during the summer. I want to extend such partnerships in order to enhance the after-school care during the school year as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tyrell.
Parks and Recreation are two completely different things, but they are related. We have some very wonderful parks. There's one down in the end of my block when my daughter was little. We were there every day, multiple times a day. But now she won't push me on the swings, but, uh, the parks are fine. We do wonderful things, and we've constantly keeping, they're kept up, they're maintained, wonderful things. The recreation side is a little different in that it provides programs. In a city the size of Berkeley, we, recreation can't be everything to all people. When I've been out talking to residents, walking around, they say, well, my recreation is target shooting, it's archery, it's metalworking, it's woodworking, it's Parks and Rec. The recreation side of Parks and Rec can't be everything to everybody. So, we have to temper what we want from Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. And then lastly, Ms. Sitraro.
Thank you. I believe Parks and Rec is a necessity for a thriving community. We do need to have options for the residents, for their health and fitness. I would like to see some more activities for the middle generations. We have a lot of activities for the younger generations and for the older generations, but I would like to see more of those activities. And I do feel that a thriving community center, Parks and Rec, could attract new residents to Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you move the mic right to your face? Talk right in. Thank you. A couple of you are heard as you hear. Close and close your face.
That would, that would not be me. You're not.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Mr. Gavin. What strategies would you employ to improve cooperation and congeniality, both within the council and between the council and the mayor's office?
Yeah, I think that as a council member, as a, as a leader of the city, that we have a responsibility to make sure that how we interact, not only on the council, but certainly with departments, city employees, residents within the community, we show the utmost respect, we show kindness that is deserved of everybody else, and that we do not demean or denigrate each other when we're looking to have honest conversations and disagreements with, between individuals. You can have those kind of disagreements, that's fine. I think that there are a lot of ways to communicate between residents and city council and departments within the city as well. I think that social media is certainly one of those avenues, but I think that we sometimes tend to forget that there's a person on the other side of that computer, and it's a lot easier to say things when you're on the other side of it. So, I think that we need to continue to act as if we are face-to-face with an individual, show them the respect that they deserve, be able to disagree without being disagreeable, and honestly, listen to listen and not just listen to respond.
Thank you. Mr. Nedu.
Thank you. Certainly, communication is very important, especially in government, and interpersonal communication is extremely important within the different branches of the government. And so, as far as strategy goes, I think the, the best thing that I can do is lead by example. Communication has been very important for me in my work experience, as well as running a business. And, and so, in terms of communication, I always listen first. I think listening is probably the most important part of communication. And then also, I want to understand where they're coming from. And so, I listen, and then I look to empathize and understand where they're coming from. And then I want to partner and work with them, so then we can drive results. And so, my strategy would be to lead by example. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Price.
Yeah, so this, this is a tricky topic, because, you know, incivility is protected by the First Amendment, and we must always treasure the ability of people to speak in ways that we might find offensive, as long as their speech doesn't infringe on others' legal rights. However, any elected official who promotes incivility is not supporting the interests of the community and does not deserve to hold office. I am pleased with the recent addition to our city's Code of Ethics, which clarifies that any person in government must maintain a constructive tone that may not be reasonably construed as demeaning, harassing, accusatory, untruthful, or disrespectful. Our elected officials should be held to a higher standard, because they act as representatives of our community and often set the tone for debate and discourse. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tyrell.
Cooperation and congeniality is hugely important. We can disagree without it becoming personal. I strive to make sure that it's not personal. And I am saddened that we had to make such an addition to the Code of Ethics to include things like communication and congeniality. That should just be a given. If you're not up to that, then you don't deserve a seat up at the big table and the big chairs. There has been, this current council, as somebody on the outside communicating with the current council, does not communicate back very well, even when it's done in a congenial manner. Simple questions asked, simple responses are not received.
Thank you. Ms. Sitraro.
Thank you. I do feel that city council needs to show the residents what productive discussions look like, and that it is okay to disagree. I would like to see a lot more discussions up here on city council, to show the residents that we can have conversations and disagree with something, and we can still be civil. On the other hand, you know, I read that ethics memo, and I, I did check the surrounding cities. And I was a little confused, because when I checked the surrounding cities, all of the cases that it pretty much involved in was financial interest or awarding contracts, not about civility. So, I'm not quite sure what our job is to do that, but I do think council needs to engage the residents and show respectful conversations, and that differing opinions are okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dean.
Yes. Upon taking out, taking office, I signed an ethics statement, and I pledged to express myself in both spoken and written communication in a manner becoming of a city official. Just this past Monday, we as a council updated our ordinance and added more things to it. It is disheartening in a way that we have to do that, but I'm encouraged that we've taken these steps, so that we all understand what's expected of us as leaders in the community. And this isn't just with, with residents, but it's with each other sitting on council, it's with everybody in the city office, all of the department heads, every member of staff. I choose to lead by example in my life. I listen to understand, rather than listen to respond. And I, and sometimes that takes more effort, but I think it, it furthers communication and it sets a tone of respect. Thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Mr. Nedu. What is your assessment of the Downtown Development Authority? Please speak to the accountability structure and the scope of its responsibilities.
Well, first of all, let me, let me say, I think downtown Berkeley is, is great. You know, as a relatively new resident to downtown Berkeley, my family and I have certainly taken advantage of the small businesses and the great restaurants that we have. And, and so, I think we have a pretty good downtown. Let's start off with that. Now, as somebody that wants to seek to improve on things, there are certainly things that we can do better, and, and the DDA is put in place to, to help with that. There are certainly challenges that we have with our downtown. It's, it's a linear downtown, so as we know it, 12 Mile and Coolidge, it's not a conventional downtown, if you will, so it's certainly a challenge, and so they have a challenging task. I believe city council's role is to be engaged with the DDA. As a, as a business owner myself, I can, I can appreciate focusing on making our downtown better. But I certainly believe that the, the city council's role in this, along with the DDA, is to work with the DDA to look for better opportunities to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Price.
Yes, I support the DDA's efforts to enhance our downtown district and attract redevelopment projects that are a good fit for Berkeley's size and unique character. In order for Berkeley's downtown to be vibrant and appealing, both for businesses and residents, we need to invest in projects that make it a destination and an enjoyable gathering place. We also need to recognize the risk of unchecked growth. We need to preserve our unique, small-town community charm, as well as our assets like free parking within reasonable walking distance to our destinations. Our council members need to have a vision for what changes make sense to our community, keeping in mind the balance between attracting redevelopment and reducing the negative sides of growth. This is a key part of a council member's role, both to have a vision and also be directly held accountable for that vision by the voters. Therefore, it is important that council members carefully consider each of the city manager's proposed appointments to the DDA's Board of Trustees, responsibly approve the DDA's budget, and continue to communicate with the business owners and residents, so that our visions can evolve as progress is made.
Thank you. Mr. Tyrell.
The DDA was created for a very specific purpose, to halt the decline of property values in the downtown. Some would argue they've been successful and they're done. The scope and rules of the DDA are very clearly written into our code. Over the last couple of years, anyway, the scope of the DDA has changed. It has expanded. Some would say that's a good thing, some would say not. There are still some things that they could do back to their original charter. As, as to accountability, there really is very little or none. Other than the budget process, council has no review and control over the DDA, except for budget and contracts.
Thank you. Ms. Sitraro.
Thank you. I do support the DDA for economic growth and development and the need to focus money into the downtown for maintenance. I also feel city council's role is to listen to the residents and the stakeholders, to see what their vision is for the downtown, and help support that. I would like to see the DDA, however, focus more on the basics, like fixing the sidewalks and finishing the wayfinding signage. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dean.
Yes. I support the efforts of our Downtown Development Authority and the Chamber to attract and retain valued business in our downtown, while supporting the foundation businesses that have been in our downtown area for years. I support the efforts of the DDA with regard to providing a structure. We have an events calendar that rivals the, any, put any other cities next to it. We have, they've, the DDA has, her, um, corralled resident volunteers to head committees to have the events. We have a wayfinding committee. to have the events. We have a wayfinding committee, which is charged with signage. We have design guidelines committees to keep our downtown charm there, to give a nod to our mid-century modern roots. And we have a public art committee, just to name a few. I support these efforts of reinvestment in our downtown by the DDA, because investing in our downtown, when you have a strong, vibrant downtown, your neighborhoods will reflect that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin?
Thank you very much. Yes, I do support the efforts to attract development to our downtown by the DDA in the form of new businesses, business retention, the marketing of our downtown, and affordable multifamily housing in there as well. First of all, we have a great group of dedicated volunteers on the DDA who give selflessly of their time, as do on all boards and commissions. But we need to remember that it is a creature of state statute. There are reporting requirements, spending requirements, that we need to consider as well. But I do think money has been spent wisely in some areas, certainly by the DDA, with facade grants, murals, the wayfinding study. And we've also set the foundation for a lot of things as well, with the market study that we've done, the downtown master plan draft, and the design guidelines, which have robust public input on all these things. So I'm happy that the DDA is continuing a search for a new executive director. As someone who sat on the DDA and was treasurer of the DDA when there was no executive director, and then when there was, I can tell you there are certainly limits to an all-volunteer board for as much work as they put in. I think it's important to have that individual that can help guide the downtown into the future, and also help support the neighborhoods as a result. Thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Ms. Bryce. And I need to caveat this, recognizing that the municipal government does not have direct control over the public schools, we're getting a lot of questions about the public schools. So can you speak to your assessment of the Berkeley public schools, and what you think the city should do to help those schools?
Sure. Well, as a parent and as a former high school English teacher, I have very high standards for schools. And Berkeley Public Schools, the reputation, was a big part of what brought our family to the community. And Berkeley Public Schools have far exceeded my expectations. We've been very pleased. I believe that they well deserve all of the awards that they've recently received. I currently serve as the PTA Vice President at Angel Elementary School, where both of my children attend. The PTA partners with the school in order to ensure that every student has the support that they need to succeed. Angel also shares a playground with a city park, so much of the maintenance of the outside space is provided by the city. And I think that's a real benefit that Angel has. I would like to explore some additional similar partnerships to see how the city can best support the schools with that kind of outdoor maintenance, and how the schools can best support the city, like I mentioned before, with collaborating with Parks and Rec for some after-school programming for working parents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Terrell?
Well, I've been involved, and I'm still involved, in after-school programming for well over 40 years. Still continue that to this day, and that's where I'd be right now if I wasn't here. The schools have a wonderful infrastructure, and that's where I think the city and the schools can really cooperate with each other. They've got gyms, they've got libraries, they've got dining facilities, they've got all kinds of infrastructure there that the city can use. When I was growing up, there was no city rec center. All of that recreation was taken out into the schools. You went to your local school for the recreation programs. So there was no community center or rec center at the time. I think that could be redone here in Berkeley as well.
Thank you. Ms. Sitra?
Thank you. Berkeley's public schools are excellent. My daughter went through from preschool at Tyndall all the way through the high school. They have wonderful after-school programs. As a community, it's our job to help the schools stay strong and the jewel of the city. And the community has passed some bonds to help maintain the buildings and fix them up. So I think that shows the city's commitment to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dean?
Yes, thank you. We have award-winning schools here in Berkeley. Our staff and faculty and students are often receiving awards. In fact, Danielle Ozanich, who teaches 5th grade at Angel, just received a national award. I believe that a strong school district and a strong city go hand in hand. And open communication between council and the school board is critical for that. And I believe that we have that open communication between the school board and the council. And I embrace opportunities to work together, not only with the school board, with the school district, and individual schools, to make Berkeley the best that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin?
Thank you very much. Superintendent Dennis McDavid, the teachers in all of our schools, the entire school district are one of the best in the state, and certainly a reason why a lot of families come to Berkeley. As I indicated at the top, that was certainly one of the factors that drew my family to Berkeley. You know, we're continually working as a city with the school district on a good partnership, where we can work together on shared concerns, priorities, initiatives, and keep that dialogue open to make sure that we're working together hand in hand to keep Berkeley as desirable as it already is. I also, I encourage the mayor to add a student representative to his committee that was going to be looking forward to what we do with the community center going forward. I think that's a key voice that we have, to look towards the future. Who better to have than a student representative? I've also talked to the city manager, too, about bringing back the co-op program for high school students, where we can get internships and potentially credit, student credit as well. So that way, we can harness some of those individuals who are interested in public service, and get them in early. And certainly, as the father of the son of a three-year-old, I'm very excited that he's knocking on the door of an elementary school here pretty soon, and looking forward to getting myself involved as well, although maybe famous last words, so we'll see how that goes. But, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nadeau?
Thank you. And I, too, like Ross, can relate. I have a two-year-old son myself, and so certainly as a father, and as somebody that comes from an educational background, education is certainly something I value. And I think that's a top priority for us as a community as well. Again, another reason why my wife and I, along with our two-year-old son, decided to move to Berkeley, was because of the schools. And going door-to-door and meeting our neighbors, I think the common theme from everybody was how great the schools are, and how genuinely excited everybody is about the schools. And so it would be my aim on city council to really strengthen the relationship between city council and the school board. I think that's certainly important for the community. And so I would look to strengthen the relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. For this next question, we'll start with Mr. Terrell. How do you feel about marijuana businesses in Berkeley?
Just to be clear and open, I voted no on Proposal 1. So I said no to that. That being said, the will of the people is the will of the people. As a servant of the people, my job then would be to implement what they want done. The administration has taken a very strong lead on this. Council has been a little behind the administration. Things are changing at the state level all the time, but we're still behind it. The big issue that most people are concerned about are the two retail dispensary options, and that's fine. But the other things like grow operations, oil extraction, testing, transport, those are just done in warehouses. So there's really nothing there. I understand and appreciate concerns of the retail operations.
Thank you. Ms. Sitra?
Thank you. I support the recreational marijuana. I don't believe Berkeley's going to get a windfall of money from it, because there's no more excise tax on medical marijuana. But I'm okay with having a few retail shops, microbusinesses, safety compliance, and provisioning centers. I would like the city to revisit having the shops in the Gateway District, because those are the only places that do not abut residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dean?
Yes. Voters in the state of Michigan, and in Berkeley specifically, voted overwhelmingly to decriminalize marijuana in the past November election. As a council, we strategically hit the pause button, because we're working on crafting and drafting our ordinance. We want to get this right. How many, where they're going to be, all of those things matter. You only get one time to do it right. So right now, we're in the process of crafting the ordinance. The zoning is handled by planning. They're working on that. That will come to us as a council, and we'll either approve it or not. And then we'll move forward from there. There's a legal process that must be followed here, and we fully intend to follow it. We are following it. We're also waiting for the state's fine-tuning. It took them about eight years to get the medical side right, so we're still waiting for them to fine-tune and come down with actually what things are going to be. We're going slowly on this, because as a council member, I would not want to put anyone in harm's way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin?
Thank you very much. Yeah, the residents of Berkeley spoke very clearly on this issue, and they have in the past on medical marijuana as well. You know, I certainly feel it's important to honor the voters' wishes in this regard, and, you know, I'm not going to pretend to be in the mind of each voter and just take it at face value for what it was. You know, again, as I said, as a father of a three-year-old, I believe it's important to make sure that we have strong regulations in place. I know on limitations about locations. I know there are limitations on distance with schools. I think we should also look at maybe distances from parks as well. But not only on location, but in terms of, you know, number of permitting, types of establishments that we want to have in our district, or not in the district, frankly, if we're worried that it's going to hinder any economic development. So I look forward to working through the process with the Planning Commission as a liaison to the Planning Commission, but also as administration continues to do their job as it is to draft ordinance and bring it back to us, and so we can have another bite at the apple, continue to look at it, you know, fine-tuning and tweaking. And I think that, again, we have to wait for some guidance also that comes down from the state, who seems to be trying to get the ball and moving down the field, and there are ducks in a row as we move forward on this. So I think that, you know, we do need to honor the voters' wishes on this, but I think there need to be strong regulations in place as to location, number of permits, and type of permitting as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Nadeau?
Thank you. As an entrepreneur and a former resident of Colorado, I have seen what life in Colorado was prior to the green rush, as they call it. But I've also seen what life is like after. And one thing I will tell you about Colorado, and we lived in Denver, was that if you looked at the family-driven communities, the family-driven communities did not, and currently do not, have recreational marijuana dispensaries. And I think there's a really important reason for that. You know, when we talk about why we moved to Berkeley, we moved to Berkeley for safety. We moved to Berkeley for the children, for the schools. And my question is, and I understand we opted in, but certainly my question is, is how can having a retail marijuana dispensary help with our safety, and how can it benefit with our children and our schools? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bryce?
Yes. Well, as a parent of two young kids, whose first priority is safety, you might be surprised to find out that I am in support of adding a few marijuana dispensaries to Berkeley's business district. Over 70% of Berkeley residents voted in support of the law that legalized recreational marijuana in Michigan, and over 60% of responses to a city survey expressed favor for allowing recreational marijuana businesses to operate in Berkeley. So I'm not alone. It's too soon to project revenue, but the rough estimates provided by the state do not suggest significant financial gains for small cities like ours that allow marijuana businesses. Nevertheless, I do support a limited number of licenses being given to marijuana dispensaries, because I want the residents who use the substance legally to have safe and convenient access to regulated sources of it. Thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Ms. Sitra. What is your assessment of the Coolidge Road Diet, including the new bike lanes?
The Coolidge Road Diet. You know, I have spoken with residents on both sides of the issues. I do support the two-year experiment, but my continued support depends on the data. I do like the left-turn lane. My concern is about increased traffic on the side streets. And I live on Kipling, so I have definitely noticed an increase in the traffic. I am really uneasy with the unprotected bike lanes. But also, I think there needs to be more education for the residents on how to navigate these lanes. As for the bike lanes, I don't actually see very many people using them. Some people do like the ability to get, if they're parking on Coolidge, they like the ability to get out so they're not in the direct line of traffic. But again, I'm just really uneasy about the unprotected bike lanes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dean?
Yes. The Coolidge Road Diet, it's called a lot of things, Restriping Project, is actually a safety study. Council approved a two-year evaluation period of the restriping. There's a pretty robust metrics matrix measuring everything and anything that you could want to know about the restriping project. That's going to be evaluated at different points along the way. In fact, November will be our first hard look at the data. And in its inception, or where it comes from, is that the thinking was, we want Coolidge to be safe for all travelers. If that metrics matrix doesn't bear out, if it's not safer, then we're going to look at alternatives, or the road will go back to the way it was. But as I'm out campaigning and knocking doors, this seems to be a topic that everybody has a pretty firm opinion about, and I do enjoy hearing all the pros and cons. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin?
Thank you very much. As a member of council, the first concern for me was safety. Study after study has shown that reducing the number of lanes actually has a positive impact on bringing down traffic accidents, side swipes, rear-ending, zooming in and out of lanes behind people. The second reason that I saw, and the reason I support, one of the reasons I supported it, was to encourage a more walkable, pedestrian-friendly area portion of our downtown, to encourage that multimodal forms of transportation, foot traffic, bike traffic, traffic calming, enhancing the economic development strategies of that district to try to pull in new retail, to try to make it safer and friendlier for all forms of transportation. So as you've heard from others, you know, this is a trial period. This is, we're doing data gathering, making sure that what we thought in terms of when this was passed actually bears out. And if it doesn't, yeah, we look back at reconfiguration to the previous situation. I do think that it does have the chance to help transform Coolidge, but I do think that even if it does, and the data bears out, I do think we need to look at some enhancements, including some of the protections for the bike lanes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nadeau?
Thank you. As someone who is a proponent of a healthier lifestyle, I think the core concept behind this initiative seems well-intentioned. But I also believe the city leaders could have done a better job of communicating before the implementation. You know, I think we're certainly in the trial period, and we're in a wait-and-see period. So I'm very interested to see what the results will show. And once we gather that information, I think we can, as a community, decide what's the best approach to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bryce?
Yes. So again, as a parent, safety is always my first priority in evaluating any proposal or project for our city. After attending all of the public input sessions and speaking with the traffic experts, I understood how four-lane to three-lane conversions with that center-turn lane could make roads like Coolidge significantly safer for all users. I do ride my bike fairly frequently down Coolidge. I use the bike lane myself, but I don't believe that that bike lane is the reason to support it or not. I believe that whether or not there is a bike lane, that potential to make it safer, to get people out of the flow of traffic to make their left-hand turns, reducing the rear-end and side swipe accident, that there's great potential there. But of course, I'm very glad that we're doing this as a study. I'm glad that we will be evaluating the project according to the standards set in that Coolidge Highway Corridor Metrics Matrix every six months, so that adjustments can be made if improved safety has not been achieved, both on Coolidge and on side streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Terrell?
On the way to this meeting tonight, there was a bicyclist in the left-turn lane waiting to turn left. There was an ambulance coming right behind her, shooting down the left-turn lane. Safety is an issue. That was not safe. The bicyclist didn't finally just barely get out of the way. What I truly objected to in this whole thing with the Coolidge Restriping is the process that we went through. They like to talk about safety. Crash data was from Lincoln to 12 Mile, not 11 to 12 Mile. Crash data was inflated. They talked about speed. The average speed in a marked 30 zone was 28. Speed was not an issue. The council came up, asked the DDA to hold off... The council came up, asked the DDA to hold off until the matrix was completed. The DDA went ahead and got started on the restriping anyway. It had to be stopped, put back, and when the matrix was approved, it went forward. Wrong way to do things.
Thank you. All right, for our next question, we'll start with Ms. Dean. Please describe one professional experience or personal quality that uniquely prepares you to serve on the city council.
Well, I would have to say, in all of my involvement, not only with the city, but in my professional life, it has prepared me for this. I've always been involved with people-oriented activities and jobs and communication, listening. It all matters, and it matters way more, I think, at this level of government. The municipal level, I believe, is where you have the most impact. There's no barrier between us. You know where I work. You might know where I live. All my contact information is out there, but I believe this is where I can do the most good. I think that problem solving, certainly, I do that every day in my business. I lead a team at my business. The team doesn't always agree, and I'm not always right. But I listen, because I think that everybody's got a voice and everybody has an opinion. And you absolutely can help mold and shape me to know what's best. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin?
Thank you very much. I think the biggest takeaway for me would be my experience. I have made my career in local government. I'm a deputy treasurer in the Oakland County Treasurer's Office. And I have worked my entire career to try to affect positive change through public policy that can actually do good in people's life. I've served the last two years on council. I'm also liaison to the Planning Commission, the Environmental Advisory Committee, served as a citizen representative on the Citizen Infrastructure Advisory Committee, and also previously on the DDA as treasurer and a board member and chair of the Finance Committee. So I have extensive experience that I've been able to accumulate over time to help kind of come up with these creative solutions to the complex problems that we face as a city, and they are complex. And so we need to be able to figure out public policy that is going to work best for residents, that's going to have their interests at heart. Good public policy that can actually make a difference in people's lives. And I've been able to work with leaders at the local, state, and federal level to do that. And so that's what I continue to do as a city council member here.
Thank you. Mr. Nadeau?
Thank you. I've started, operated, and managed a small business for eight years. A successful small business, which I still currently operate. And that is due to customer service. Customer service is very, very important in business. And I believe that translates over to public service. Service is something that's a passion of mine. And so my focus in aim in city council is to really focus on service, service to our citizens. So I certainly think that's a certain strength of mine. And also, I also believe being able to negotiate and communicate with people is certainly a strength of mine as well, too. And I plan to implement that and translate that over to city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bryce?
So after completing a master's degree in English Studies, I taught high school students for seven years. I worked in independent schools, where my duties extended to teaching courses in wilderness survival, novel writing, and immigration studies. What I enjoyed the most about that job was when I could match students' unique skills and interests to the needs of their communities in order to create independent service learning projects. For example, I once had an underachieving student who hated the classroom but loved working with his hands. Together, we found a domestic violence shelter that needed help with landscaping. He put in countless hours designing and building a garden project, connecting with the residents and their kids throughout the process. What he learned there became the topic of a powerful college essay, and he's currently a successful attorney. If elected, I will use this skill to match the strengths of our community members to the needs of our community in order to make Berkeley the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Terrell?
Well, as I talked about earlier, I have a background in corporate and nonprofit finance. Nothing in terms of the numbers that the finance director can throw at a council member will ever surprise me. I'll be able to understand it all. I did a lot of work in process, process documentation, process improvement. But where I really excelled was I managed the people's side of change. I had a lot of people, direct reports, indirect reports, people who didn't even work for me across North America. Things changed all the time, but I was the one who was out there on the people's side, working with them so they could understand the change and what their impacts would be.
Thank you. Ms. Sotaro?
Thank you. In my current position, I'm a trust advisor for, in wealth management, for a regional bank. And that means I'm a professional fiduciary, which I take care of other people's money. But it also means that I make decisions on a daily basis that affect real people and their lives. And I plan to bring that knowledge to city council. Like, I know this isn't a vacuum, that it does affect every single one of you. Also, another strength I have, I feel I am a fair and open-minded person, and I have the ability to find a middle ground with people on opposite sides of the spectrums. Thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Mr. Gavin. What are your priorities and plans for investment in various municipal buildings?
Right, so as we talked about, thank you very much, by the way, as we talked about for infrastructure going forward, you know, certainly with city buildings and everything like that, and the community centers, we look forward to trying to figure out what the next steps are going to be with that. The mayor has put together a committee. As I indicated, we, each council member, put together, or put up a couple individuals, one of which of mine was a student representative. But we look forward to hearing back what is going to be the next step in terms of the community center. So I think that that's, you know, we look at potential bonding as an option. I think it's situationally dependent. I mean, there are a lot of costs that go associated with that, not only for the community center, but for the city hall as well. I think that we need to make sure we understand, you know, construction costs, operation costs, borrowing costs for a financial advisor and bond counsel. So I think that when we look at how we're going to improve each of the city buildings that we have here, we need to make sure that all options are on the table in terms of funding, but that the numbers actually need to make sense as we move forward and look to make those improvements in our building infrastructures. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nadeau?
Thank you. I think, I think as a city and residents of the city, we must prioritize on what's important. Obviously, you know, when we talk about infrastructure, the city hall is certainly a top priority. It represents our city. It represents what we stand for. It's a center point of our city. And so my priority would be to invest, and really more importantly, communicate the importance of investing to our community and to our residents into city hall. And then certainly, community center, we've talked about it. And that's, that's something that needs to be addressed as well, too. But I, you know, as somebody that really values infrastructure and city infrastructure, those two would be my top priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bryce?
Yes, as I mentioned before, I do very much believe that Berkeley needs a new community center. The current facility has outlived its expected lifespan and has structural and mechanical issues that are costing the city too much to indefinitely pass, patch, excuse me. But of course, as biased as I am, whether or not a bond passes will not be up to me. I encourage all residents who care, one way or the other, about the community center to send their feedback to the mayor to bring to his group. And I encourage everyone to get out and vote so that the outcome reflects the will of our community. Now, in terms of just general budgeting of the, what our current resources to capital projects, I believe that we should invest in capital improvements now, while the city can comfortably afford them, while maintaining a healthy emergency reserve, so that we are able to defer them when another economic crisis occurs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Terrell?
One of the things that came out of the recent energy study was the fact that there is no one person who's responsible for maintenance and maintaining all of the buildings, all of the city buildings. That would be, definitely be a priority to get one person and say, you, you're responsible. Now, come up with a list. There are a lot of things that could be done in terms of little maintenancy things that can help things along. There's been a lot of talk of water pooling around the foundation at the community center. Okay, put an elbow on that downspout, get the water away. We've got the big dump trucks. We'll put some soil in there and regrade so the water flows away. We just, in the last couple of days, we got some maintenance done on the gazebo, which is a wonderful thing to have that redone and repainted and ready for Santa Claus coming up here in a couple of, a couple of months, a couple of weeks, several weeks. But we're also looking at having work done to repair our Veterans Memorial as well.
Thank you. Ms. Sotaro?
Thank you. City Hall does need renovations, but my support will depend on the plans, the cost, and the ability to properly maintain any renovations. As for the community center, most of the residents I spoke with want a new community center. And I think the bond failed because it didn't follow my three E's engagement. There was no real community engagement. There was predetermined options that were selected by a few. No volunteer groups were interviewed in the process. Education, the surveys were poorly designed. They didn't show the residents the true cost of options. And empowerment, you know, when residents feel part of the process, they become advocates. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dean?
Yes, the two buildings that I think need the most attention in our city are certainly city hall and the community center. After combining the courts with Royal Oak, there's a whole portion of this building that's not in use. And the portion that is being used is not being used efficiently or effectively. We have huge swings in heating and cooling in this building. Things are old, and we, I mean, we're doing the best that we can with what we have. In terms of the community center, that bond was narrowly defeated at the polls, which says to me that people, and what I'm hearing at the doors, is that people want it. They just didn't want that. They didn't want that one. So the mayor asked each of us on council to give him three names, people who voted yes, people who voted no. He's formed a group, and they're studying that. They're talking to each other. They're talking to other residents. They're visiting other municipalities to look at what's working here, what isn't working. There's a serious crack in the foundation of the community center where you can see daylight. The HVAC systems are not adequate. So we definitely have to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be our last question before we move to closing statements. And we'll start with Mr. Nadeau. As a member of council, what would you do to attract new businesses to Berkeley?
As, you know, as a business owner myself, you know, I think that it's very important to really focus on the things that make Berkeley a wonderful place to do business. You know, I think as far as specifically what I would do to attract new businesses is really just, you know, focus on, on the businesses that are working and that are doing well, and talk to them and see what, you know, what it is that they're doing well and what it is that's working for them. And my, my aim would be to translate that information to seek and acquire new businesses to work here in Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bryce?
Yes, if I could wave a magic wand and change one thing in downtown Berkeley to help attract businesses and residents to come and use those businesses, it would be to create a community gathering space downtown. A place where, whether it's for some seating for a concert, some seating where we can just come and eat, where kids can go and play, to make it a place where young families will make it a destination. Our neighbors from our surrounding cities will feel welcome to come and shop and eat and dine. And I think that that sort of a placemaking emphasis would really improve our downtown and attract new businesses as well as residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Terrell?
Thank you. There is so much more to Berkeley business districts than downtown. We need to stop the emphasis just on downtown. Let's look at Woodward, East 12 Mile, Greenfield, 11 Mile. All great places for new businesses to come in. There are some empty spots, so good, good places to do that there. We have an amazing, amazing Chamber of Commerce. They do yeoman's work. Their, their initiatives are successful year after year, and they build upon those successes. We have a wonderful chamber. Let's let them do even more. Personally, we also need to take a look at our regulations and how those regulations are implemented and enforced to make Berkeley a more business-friendly community where the businesses want to come.
Thank you. Ms. Sotaro?
Thank you. To reiterate what my fellow candidates have said, we do have a Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce, and an active DDA. We are looking for a new DDA director, and hopefully that director will bring in some new ideas for the city, working with the stakeholders and residents and volunteer groups to bring the DDA to its full potential. I think one of the important things is to understand and respect what is unique about Berkeley. That's very important. We are in the process of becoming certified in the redevelopment-ready communities, and that, I think, will bring a lot of good things to Berkeley. It will streamline the development process, make it transparent and efficient. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dean?
Yes, Berkeley is ranked number one as one of the best places to live in Michigan. We're a safe city, and I've, as I'm out knocking on doors, I'm hearing people telling me this and how much they love living here. They love our walkable downtown. They love that they can eat and shop right here in Berkeley. I fully support the efforts of our Chamber of Commerce and our DDA to attract new business and retain it. We are continually looking for ways to add new business to our downtown. And I say downtown because it is the business district. We are, we have a new downtown master plan that we just had a presentation on this past Monday night. And we'll be doing a citywide master plan moving forward. We just hired a consulting group to do that. Our ordinances will also be updated to be reflective of those master plans and to be in step with them. Owning a Berkeley business, it's my pleasure to have my business here. I've found the city and the residents to be nothing but supportive and encouraging of me, and I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think we have to look at it as sort of an all-encompassing idea of bringing businesses to downtown. I mean, you need that walkable community. You need parking. You need to make sure that residents want to be able to frequent the downtown. We do have an active chamber and an active DDA, and I think that's a key strategy to enhance that. And also working with Oakland County's one-stop shop to be able to pull in some of that investment into the downtown area. But businesses look for a lot of other things besides just that. I mean, they look for good city services. They look for safety. They look for good budgeting practices at city hall. And, you know, we've had that with our 40% fund balance and also our multi-year budgeting, which helps project and forecast out to mitigate any economic downturn. So I think that as we look to attract businesses, we need to make sure that we are looking at all avenues and all aspects and all sides of this. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the questions. Now we'll, we'll finish with closing statements, and we'll start with Mr. Terrell.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting together the forum. By maintaining the independence and nonpartisan nature of city council, we can accomplish great things together. We can present points of view, even disagree, and yet still be courteous. All too often, verbal hand grenades get tossed and nothing really gets done. We enjoy a phenomenal public safety services. I already knew that and came to even better understand and appreciate that as a member of the first cohort of the Citizens Police Academy. DPW is also first-rate. Leave here on a snowy morning. Our streets are plowed, and nobody's even awake in the other nearby cities to get the streets plowed. That being all said, sunshine is our best disinfectant. The work of the city must be done out in the open. Backroom dealings must end. If you cannot put away your loyalty to party politics and do for the city, then you do not deserve a seat at this table. It's time for Berkeley to have a voice that is willing to challenge the partisan, same old, same old. I am that voice. I ask for your vote, and I serve by bringing practical solutions to our city.
Thank you. Ms. Bryce?
Yes, so by now, you've probably Yes, so by now, you've probably realized that I'm a parent of two young kids, that I care deeply about safety, collaboration, and communication, and that I like to be prepared. I hope that you have also seen that I am very proud of Berkeley, of where we've been and where we're going, that my vision for Berkeley is positive, and that I will work incredibly hard with many others to help bring it to life. Please connect with me in whatever way works best for you, whether it's through phone, email, text, social media, or at the door. I'll come to your door, please to do it. I'd like to connect with you so that you can share your own positive vision for Berkeley's future. And please vote for me by absentee ballot or on November 5th at the polls, so that we can work together to make Berkeley the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nadeau?
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for coordinating this event, and thank you to my fellow Berkeley residents for welcoming me and my family with open arms. One of my favorite things about running for City Council has been going door-to-door and meeting the citizens of this great town. This has given me a great opportunity to listen to our community and learn about what matters to you the most. My goal is to preserve the things that we love about our town, but also work on fixing the issues that matter so that we can continue to progress as a city. But in order for us to move forward effectively, we need to have a fresh voice at the table. The City Council is full of people that have been here a long time and well-connected, but for us to keep Berkeley moving in the right direction, we need someone that doesn't have any bias or preconceived notions and willing to make decisions with the best interests of the entire community and not just a select few. Now is the time for our city to have a fresh voice, and that's exactly what I will bring to City Council. On November 5th, I ask you, vote for a fresh perspective by voting Nadeau for City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin?
Thank you very much, and thank you again for having this forum here, people here and those watching at home. Local government is my passion. I've loved serving on council for the last two years as we tackle some of these big challenges that face the city. Throughout my time in the city, on City Council, and in my professional life, my goal has been to come up with some of these creative solutions to the complex problems that we face, like infrastructure, like enhancing our quality of life, and to make the government more responsive to the residents, and create that public policy that can actually do good in people's lives. As a council member, attorney, and deputy treasurer in Oakland County, I have the experience, the drive, the edge, or the dedication and commitment to continue to work hard for my fellow residents, all in an effort just to continue to be an honest and thoughtful public servant. Thank you for listening tonight. I hope I get the chance to continue to serve Berkeley in this role and that I can have the residents endorsement on November 5th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Dean?
Yes. In closing, I'm a wife and a mother, not of young children, but I want to make sure that the city provides the best environment for families to raise their children. As the council liaison to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, I support efforts to provide well-maintained parks and sports fields for our use. Serving on the Emergency Operations Plan Committee on City Council, I've worked to keep our residents safe in the event of a disaster. Experience matters. I'm a business owner as well as a resident, and I believe this dual perspective allows me to serve thoughtfully and effectively on City Council. I'm actively, actively engaged in our community, having served on the Greater Berkeley Chamber of Commerce Board and our Downtown Development Authority. I bring a positive, independent voice to the table, and I want to continue to be a responsible steward of our resources. I'm asking for your vote on November 5th, so that I may continue to serve our city in this way, the way that I love. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this evening. Thank all of you for coming and those watching at home. Good night.
Thank you. Ms. Terrell?
Thank you. I moved to Berkeley in 1995, when a friend and lifelong Berkeley resident convinced me to look at houses in her hometown. One drive through the city had me convinced that this is where I was meant to be. I love the small-town feel and the close proximity to almost everything. Berkeley is also where I chose to raise my daughter. My decision to run for City Council took focus in 2016, when it became apparent that the city had lost touch with the residents after a series of missteps. I truly believe that more communication between the residents and the city could have avoided the backlash and allowed the residents a voice on the future of Berkeley. Some of the issues today are the same as in 2016, and some are new. However, the need for more open, honest dialogue continues. If elected on November 5th, I would be honored to represent Berkeley's residents and stakeholders to give them a stronger voice on City Council, and using my three E's, engagement, education, and empowerment. Thank you.
Thank you. The League of Women Voters would like to thank all the candidates for their participation tonight and their commitment to public service. We'd like to thank CMNTV for making the, for filming tonight. The rebroadcast of this forum will be available on the City of Berkeley website, so please tell your friends. Mostly, we'd like to thank the audience, you, for being engaged in our democracy. The League of Women Voters is funded by citizens like you and by interested corporations as well. Our membership is open to men and women over the age of 16. Please remember to vote on November 5th. Please help your friends and family get out and vote on November 5th, because as we like to say at the League, democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you all very much, and good night.